This is the Wapaka area school district board of education meeting.
We will start with a pledge and I'm going to, since I haven't had a chance to pick on this person before, I'm going to ask Rainie to lead us in the pledge, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll call this meeting to order, let the record reflect that Mr. Hackett is excused, and I would anticipate that Mr. Shamble will indeed be joining us. Everyone else is in attendance. With that, I will call for a motion on the agenda.
So moved.
Motion to approve the agenda as presented, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. With that, we are moved to public comment. Okay, we can keep moving along, the agenda's getting a little more under control. Approval of the minutes of the December 12th, 2017, regular board meeting, is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion or corrections? You're being done, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much, we'll move on to communications. Mr. Negan?
January 20-
No. Doctor.
Sure, whatever, bring. January 22nd through the 26th has been identified as adult crossing guard recognition week. So as such, we, as a board, as an administration, we extend our sincere gratitude to all of our adult crossing guards who help ensure that our students find their way to and from school safely each and every day school is in session. The Wapaka Comet Booster Club has made a donation of $5,921 to purchase a golf cart for the use of the athletic trainer. The district, the administration, as well as the board, extend its gratitude towards the Booster Club for their very generous donation. Certainly would not hurt to have a motion to accept.
We have a motion to accept that.
I'll make a motion that we accept the donation by the Booster Club with gratitude.
Is there a motion, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much, and thank you to the Booster Club.
And then, very timely, as Mr. Eggburk joins us here, we want to recognize Carl Eggburk for his 41 years in education. Thirty-three of those years have been in service to the school district of Wapaka, and certainly we owe Mr. Eggburk, Principal Eggburk, Athletic Director Eggburk, a round of applause for his profound impact. And then finally, last but not least, is the fall sports recognition. And you can see in the document up on the screen, we've got a number of student athletes that are being recognized for their athletic abilities and talents and participation in the fall sports as outlined. So we've got cross-country, it's a little difficult for my eyes to read those names from here, so I'll just let you review those names, and, okay, thanks for the solution. We've got Danny Ash, honorable mention for boys' cross-country. Second team, Colby Nimmer, football honorable mention, Bruce Sternwise, Brendan Canterbury. Second team, Mark Kilcoin, Nick Gatto, Jake Pat Kratts. First team, we've got Bruce Sternwise, Jacob Landbader. Girls' golf, honorable mention, Sidney Bame, Alana Radley. Second team, Katie Ash. First team, Markey Ash, first team post Crescent, honorable mention, Golf Coaches Association Allstate placed, 25th at State. So congratulations goes out to all of our fall sports athletes. Oh, there is a second page, how nice. Boys soccer, honorable mention, Jack Snyder for his position as forward. Second team, Brett Anke, defender, Bailey Colden, goalkeeper. And first team, Zach Thurman, midfielder, honorable mention post Crescent. So again, congratulations to all of our fall sports athletes and their coaches. Yes, please.
...
Outstanding. Thank you.
So did you teach all these people how to excel at their particular sport?
Oh, alright, alright. Moving on to the district administrators' report. This is our Christmas, our annual Christmas update. You can see that once again, there was a very generous gift-giving season by staff and community members to our local families in need. And we were able to collect, wrap, and deliver gifts to families all across the district. WLC had 58, high school 32, middle school 21. Age three and under, we had 16. Chain had two families with two kids each. We had four students aged 19. And then, the number of parents and families equaled 74. So you can see that we had a number of donations from local community members and businesses. And just as I've remarked a number of times since I've arrived, this is an extremely generous community, very thoughtful and very supportive to not only the school district, but to all of our families in need. So what a wonderful celebration for the holidays. And then-
Board monitoring?
Yes, board monitoring. This week, or this month rather, we have Link Crew on decked, on deck. So I am going to ask Ms. Jess Banks and her entourage to take it from here, and I'm going to switch over to her PowerPoint.
Perfect. Thank you for having us, we're just here to provide a brief update on Link Crew, new initiative that we started at the high school this year. But rather than have me and Danielle McKee talk about all of our accomplishments and what an experience it's been, we have a couple of Link leaders and some freshmen of us to talk about their experiences. We have Brett and Rainie here. I'm actually going to take you board numbers through one of the activities that the freshmen do at the very beginning of the year to meet a challenge together. So they'll run you through that, and then we'll talk a little bit about what our activities are throughout the year.
Okay, so, we're going to be playing a game called the Count Off. And you count through 1 through 20 consecutively, and you each have to say a number. So you can't have like any patterns or anything that would make it easier. So, do you have any idea?
You can't say numbers like in order, like 1, 2, 3, then you're done. You can only say three numbers, not in a row. And you can't like make gestures or anything to tell someone to go.
Can you take notes?
And-
No, you can't take notes.
We're in trouble.
Yeah. We're in real trouble.
So do you want to give us a real demonstration of how that works?
Should we do this?
We'll do it.
We'll do it to five, just for you.
Okay, okay.
We don't want to get too easy for you.
Okay.
One.
Two.
So we'll start over because two people slept listening earlier.
One.
One.
Two.
Three.
You get the idea, right?
No.
No.
Anyone can say a number at any time, you just cannot say three numbers in a row, 1, 2, 3, as one individual. So in a combination, you want to go up to 20 with only one person saying each number at one time.
One.
Two.
Three.
Twelve.
It's sequential though, from 1 to 20 sequentially.
One.
Start over.
Oh.
One.
Two.
Three.
Four.
Five.
Okay, gotta go again. One.
Two.
Three.
Four.
Five.
Six. Seven.
Eight.
Nine.
Ten. I'm sad to have ideas.
No, they did. Two.
One.
Two.
Three.
Four.
Five.
Six.
Seven. Eight.
Nine.
Eleven. Twelve.
Thirteen.
You'll get it this time, huh?
Okay, before we go on, is WDX recording? I know you've got it on camera.
One.
Two.
One.
Two.
Three.
Four. Five. Six.
Seven.
Eight.
One.
Two.
Three, four. Five, six, seven.
Always want the next one.
Okay, he did three, we can't do that. One.
Two, three.
So we have a defined amount of time. One, two. Three, four.
Five, six.
Seven, eight.
Nine.
One, two.
Three, four.
Five, six.
Seven, eight. Nine, ten.
Eleven, twelve. Thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen.
So what's that game called?
Count Off.
Count Off, my.
So now that you noticed how during this game, you guys encountered pretty many challenges.
Being very polite.
More than a freshman would.
I mean, some would say that. All you guys encountered challenges, freshmen here at Wapaka High School encountered those challenges as well. So by you guys keep trying to persevere through those challenges, it's exactly like what freshmen do, is they're trying to complete the challenge, but they're not alone, and that's why they use the Link leaders. So they help complete the challenges with someone else by their side to help them throughout their high school career.
So how many Link people are there that are helping out, approximately?
About 35, I think 32 is the exact number, but juniors and seniors, we have a total of 32 Link leaders.
And how are they paired up?
We were a randomly selected crew of, it's about 10 to 12 freshmen, and there are two leaders paired per crew. So this year, we changed our homeroom structure a little bit, so they're with the same crew rather than alphabetically, and they'll have contacts with their leaders throughout this year.
And what kind of training do the Link leaders get prior to the beginning of next year, let's say?
We had a nine-hour training day, the day before orientation, and we just went through the activities and how to explain them, and the purpose of each activity, and like how we could relate it back to them.
I'm going to throw this out to the freshmen in the back. How did this help you integrate into high school?
It helped a lot. I came from a smaller school, like very, very small, so transitioning into a really, really big school like this, to me at least, it helped a lot, like making friends and just getting to know the building.
Were you less intimidated by the upperclassmen?
Yeah.
How did you hear about the program, or did you read the program?
Danielle actually brought the program to our attention. She's trained at another school, so she advocated for it last year. If you'd like to go to our next slide, we can talk a little bit about Link Crew. It's a research-based program, and so all of the activities are in pre-planned curriculum. But as you can see, as Brett and Rainie described to you, that they all have something to connect back to real life. And so whether it's meeting challenges as a group or building that sense of community before the freshmen even step into the school, before their first day of school, that's the whole point of Link Crew. So there's freshmen and upperclassmen connection. So the freshmen know at least one other person or two other people for both of their leaders before they even start school. And then there's year-round support for transition. So the next, oh, these are just pictures of our orientation this year, which was our first orientation. Some of the Link leaders, some of the coordinators here. Ms. Urb is also one of the coordinators, we didn't mention her at the very beginning. One of the, a couple of pictures are like a tunnel that we do as teachers and administrators. We all get in the tunnel, and the freshmen walk through, and that's kind of their first high school experience, it's kind of cool. Go to the next slide, please. I'm, do you want me to talk about follow-ups right now?
We can with the freshmen.
Yeah. So these are student testimonials, you can read through them, but these guys have something to say too. One, something, go on.
Go for it. Having the Link leaders helps us get to know more of the students coming into like a new school since we're freshmen, and it gives us a chance to get like extra help if we have any trouble on the homework.
And like the social activities we do, it helps like make more friends and get to know people like outside of the freshman class, and like help get to know your community too. Every Monday, or the day we come back to school after a weekend, if it's not a Monday, like we have a Monday off, we go into homerooms. We usually, if it's like a, if it's just a quick homeroom, we don't really do anything. But one time, there was a 19-minute homeroom, and we did like behavior in class, like how you shouldn't interrupt during class or ask off-topic questions. And it kind of improved the behavior of most of the kids that were in my class at the, in the homeroom, which was kind of nice because it was a little more peaceful than in my other class times.
So to go off from that, I'll go on academic follow-ups. We have common kickoff every Monday or every first day of the week, and Link leaders go into the freshmen, common kickoffs about once every six weeks, and they go through a lesson with them. You were referring to disruptive behaviors in classes. So they role-played, and they tried to get the point across of not being that disruptive person, or how you handle a disruptive person in class and be a responsible, respectful young person within the class. So the common kickoffs for the Link leaders are awesome because they hone in on their leadership skills as a young adult and into maybe college or the workforce. And then the other kind of follow-up that we do is a social follow-up. We've done three this year, and anticipate probably three more. We've done a tailgate, so that was kind of later at night, 6 to 6:45. We've done two other ones, we've done open skate at the expo, and we did a pumpkin carving caramel apple thing in October, all of which were attended well. The tailgate obviously was attended the most because it was like 6 o'clock, everyone was done with sports and activities and clubs. The other two were attended well, but they're doing some athletic sporting events or practices, so they worked, there wasn't as many people. But I think all three of them were successful, all three of them catered to a variety of different students, and some of them were students that don't often stay after school, and they chose to. So I think those are all awesome opportunities for our students. And we have just a few more pictures from some of our social follow-ups, and some of our student testimonials from our leaders who aren't here with us today, but they have written down their experiences. And I think you all have a copy of the presentation, so you can read through those testimonials at any time. Here are just some photos of our follow-ups, many of the variety of events that we've had throughout the year. And the very last thing we just wanted to talk about was our Link Crew success could not be possible without all of our community partners. So throughout the year, we've had a lot of wonderful, wonderful businesses and organizations throughout the community help us out, Farmer State Bank, Schuler's Liquidators, plus many, many local businesses throughout the, throughout the community. And even in-house district support has been phenomenal between administrative personnel, other staff who are willing to step up and help us in all of our activities and orientation especially, which is a huge undertaking. And especially for orientation, because it was not during the school year, the bus garage in particular had a huge impact on helping get such a high rate of attendance. It was over 85% attendance, and that was a large part thanks to the rates of the bus garage. So we are very, we're going to have outside and inside support for this.
Well, thank you to the coordinators, thank you to the leaders, and thank you to the crews.
Danielle, before you leave, this is primarily talking here about 9 through 12. Are there any plans, can it be instituted at the middle school level?
There's something called WEB, and that is specifically a middle school program. It's related to Link Crew, but it's middle school. So there is something that the middle school could implement that's similar to Link Crew. It's called WEB, and it's all associated together, you know, it's kind of one big company.
Good, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, very kind.
Thank you for coming. Okay, with that, we'll move to section eight of the agenda. We'll start with meetings attended. Do any board members have any reports on meetings attended? We'll move on to school visits. We have this largely off for the holidays, so I'm not sure that anybody went off schedule on that. Okay, very good. Upcoming meetings?
So next week is the annual Wisconsin Association of School Boards Convention that will be held in Milwaukee. And although a quorum of the board may be present, no official business will be conducted. And then finally, February 13th is the next regularly scheduled board meeting. Also, go ahead.
Sorry, I'm just going to say, just a reminder to my fellow board members, I'm the official delegate again to the big convention delegate assembly. If you have any ideas or concerns you want to have carried forth, you can give those to me, and they can be voiced there. That's on Wednesday, the 17th, I believe.
And what Pat was just referring to falls under the next item on agenda of WASB resolution, so very, very timely. Our spring election candidates have been identified as Betty Mannion, Sandra Robinson, Sandra, and Mark Polabisky. The order in which they are listed on the agenda is the order in which they will appear on the ballot. Mr. Shamble has decided not to run again, and we certainly extend our gratitude for his many years of dedicated service to the board and to the district. And that brings us to committee reports.
Okay, we'll start with the instructional committee.
Okay, the instructional committee met on Monday, yesterday, 8:00 in the morning until noon time, with personnel. We had a lot to go over, and the first order of business is the charter school contract. And we spent quite a long time discussing the contract. Let's back up just for a moment, for those of you in the audience, just a reminder, the school district of Wapaka has, is moving forward in the creation of a charter school out at the chain. And it will encompass three grade levels, and will start in the fall of 2018. But prior to being able to get off the ground, it has to have a charter, as its name implies, and a contract that stipifies exactly what it is going to do and how it's going to do it, and all the details. There's been a committee that has been working together for quite some time to create that contract. I have a copy here, and after tonight's meeting, I'm sure you can take a look at it if anybody would like to. It's quite lengthy, as it needs to be, as per state statutes pertaining to a lot of the different categories within the contract. And it has a lot of state statute appendix material to back up all of the, most all of the information. So we went through all of that, when I say we, everybody here on the board today was also here yesterday, and we went through this document page by page, pretty much, and asked questions, looked into certain ideas we think maybe need to be tweaked a little bit, and corrections if need be, and so forth, to get to the point where we are tonight, which is to hopefully approve this contract. Now, there's some people here with us tonight who can talk more about it than I can, certainly Rhonda and some of the people from the committee in terms of details. But the long and short of it is, the contract that we have now, that we have all gone through pretty well, sets in motion after tonight, assuming we pass this, sets in motion the idea that well, Wapaka, for the first time in its history, will create a charter school. And that's really what we're doing with this charter tonight. It's pretty, it's a big step for us, it's groundbreaking in many respects. And we're fortunate to have the people who administratively have been working real hard, the parents and committee members who have been working real hard to put all this together. This has been well over a year in the making, in terms of the materials, and to get to this point. And we're still, what, nine months away from the actual opening of school, with lots of work to do in between. So I wanted to do that and say that publicly because oftentimes, when we pass certain things, members of the public aren't always sure what that's all about. That's just kind of a summary, without having to go into all the details. We're basically starting the charter school in Wapaka, and that's what this contract does. Now, and board members, any of the board members here can certainly chime in, but a couple of things I think we should just point out to the general public because one of the things that we have always talked about, we talked about it quite at length yesterday in our committee meeting, was we want to make sure publicly that people have the right perception of a charter school. First of all, it's a public school. There's no cost involved to any of the students who attend. There's always that misconception that somehow it's private, or somehow that it's only for certain people. That's not the case at all. It is a public entity, just like our public school is public in the sense that we don't charge our students any cost as far as their education. That's the first thing I just want to point out. Secondly, the charter specifically talks about having a limited number of students to begin with. That number is 54, it says here in the charter over and over again. 54 students is the max, that doesn't mean we're going to get 54, we're hoping, but we don't know until people apply to get into the charter school from within our district or from without our district. And 54 is the number that we believe would be, and the people who put the charter together and the committee believes would be the appropriate number. It's a 1 to 18 ratio, and it will take in grades, correct me if I'm wrong, here, 3, 4, and 5. Correct? The intent is, and this is a five-year contract, so we talked about this quite a bit yesterday, we're looking long-term, right? So next year, it'll be 3, 4, and 5. But the hope is that the following year, which would be 2019, that might increase by one grade level. So therefore, the number 54 may also go up. So it's kind of a sliding number, if you will. 54 to start, we'll see where we are in a year from now, and hopefully it will increase. Am I correct?
It'll be two grade levels, one will be second and sixth in the next year.
Oh, two, okay.
Yep.
Good, I'm glad you guys are, because I'm kind of just summarizing here without having to go through everything. But again, correct me if I'm wrong on any of this. And so that's the, this charter, again, just a reminder, is a five-year contract with the school district. And a couple of basics, again, the Chain Exploration Center, which is the technical name, official name of our charter school, Chain Exploration Center, CEC, will have its own board, which will act much like this board does, distribution of funds, setting of curriculum, all kinds of things dealing with the school, the running of any school. It does however, have to answer in total, overall, to this board, meaning your elected school district school board. So there's another misconception that charter schools could do whatever they want. Well, to a certain extent, they have lots of freedom and liberty to do much more within, but they still are answerable to us. So let's make sure that we all understand that, so that people out in the community hopefully will understand, this is not a, an entity without some parameters, okay? And I'm saying a lot of this only because I'm heading off at the pass, I hope some of this discussion that's going to happen later, and some of the questions I've already had. of this discussion that's gonna happen later, and some of the questions I've already had. So with that having been said, and I don't know, Penny, I know you're the other person on the instructional committee, if you have any comments, and if anybody, Rhonda, if you wanna make some comments, sort of like, now's the time to talk about the contract.
I have a comment.
Yes, and please introduce yourself if you would.
Yes, I am Megan Sanders, I am on the government's court, so speaking on behalf of the government's court and the contract. In, when we talk about the statute, the state statute that deals with preference, we are asking that the board give us some leniency on the wording that we submit to the DPI, that we can formulate the best and strongest argument to get a waiver and receive that from the state. And so the wording that is currently in there, we are wanting to have the ability to word it, so it's a stronger argument before it is sent off to the DPI for approval. And so we're asking for approval for that tonight, in conjunction with approval of the charter.
Right, are you referring to section seven point eight?
Actually, eleven point one, which is up there.
Oh. And as long as you have the floor.
Yes.
I think it would be really appropriate if you tell us how your selection process will go. That will also maybe help people, parents, in the future, if they want their son or daughter to be involved, how that's gonna happen.
So the selection is open to anybody in the district that wants to attend the school. They can apply, and so there's open enrollment for our district, and then following that will be open enrollment for other districts as well. So any child that wants to attend will have an opportunity to do that, and that is our hopes. The state waiver that we're asking, it right now specifies that the current attendance zone would give preference to those students over the other students in the district. And so we are asking and requesting a waiver for that, so that does not exist. And so that is where we are asking for flexibility in wording. So right now, the wording details the percentage of students that attend the chain as opposed to the WLC, and so we are just wanting to be able to make sure that that's the best argument that we can come up with before we send it to the DPI for the waiver.
So correct me if I'm wrong, but what, in essence, what you're saying is, it doesn't depend on where you live in the school district, when you apply, everybody will be given equal footing. That's the waiver that you're asking for, is that correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
The waiver that's being displayed up there is in reference, though, to section seven, correct?
Yes.
And I'm missing page thirty, which details.
I don't know why it printed off, I have to rub another one.
Those ones that were left at the tables here tonight are every other page, we've got even pages only, unfortunately. If you use the one that's on the screen, has them all.
Maybe Greg can go to that while we're doing that. You could get to page thirty and put that up there for us, is the one that Dimitri is referencing.
And page thirty does outline a process, because if there is what's termed an oversubscription, then we go to a lottery system.
Right. And we, I'm sorry, go ahead, say it.
No, and there are, there are some levels of selection outlined in, I think it's seven point one or three, seven point three.
It's back here.
So it's page eight in the.
We go to page eight.
In the. Well, that's.
Seven point three.
Seven point three.
I guess I didn't even notice it, because I'd assumed it was all here. There it is, there's page eight.
There it is.
Now, let's be clear, we, yesterday, we talked through this whole process, but again, and you can help me if I, correct me, but the very nature of a lottery system, if there is a overly, an over amount of people applying, a lottery system by its very nature is a public drawing, so it will be monitored and completely open, and that's what you brought up, so that people who may have a child pulled out, or not, on a lottery system, will know that it's fair and above board.
Can we scroll down a bit, see the second part of that? See, that language was not changed.
See, that's.
That is yesterday's.
I don't know why they printed off, I'll go get a copy right now.
Yeah, maybe we'll take a five-minute break.
I need to see the actual.
I rather.
I have it on the thumb drive.
Okay.
With the board's indulgence, we'll put this, suspend this for the moment while we get a clean copy. Should have the red line version coming up, if we could move on to.
Okay, before we move on to that, maybe we could just answer a couple more questions not pertaining to this page. You could just remind us, how are our staff or teachers going to be selected?
According to the first plan that we brought before you in September, we had outlined that we would always try to hire from within. The goal is that no one will lose their job. We would hire, every year when we add three teachers, two from within, one from without if needed. So that's how that will do. So first from within, as long as the teacher is, no one will be forced to teach there because the whole purpose of a charter school is that the project-based premise is embraced, and the teacher has professional development toward them.
Okay.
So when a student applies to the charter school, it's not just because, though they don't like the school they're at, they wanna be at a different building, it really has to be, the student and the parent want to be there because of the way that the instruction will take place. It will be entirely different way of learning. And that's the whole purpose that the community wanted, that's why the community wanted to see a charter school, to bring different ways of learning, different ways for students to explore things they're interested in. So it's an alternative way to learn.
And Rhonda, do you, would you like to remind us again, as a project-based learning, what are the four major areas that the CEC is going to tap?
It will be STEM, and that stands for science, technology, engineering, and math, environmental, the arts, and agricultural. Projects within those fields.
And another question that undoubtedly will come forward, and we need to make sure it's very publicly known, the students who attend the charter school will also be required to do all of the testing as all the other students in our district is required by the state, is that correct?
That's correct.
And another question, if, if a child attends, say, third grade at the charter school, do they have to reapply for fourth?
They do not.
And reapply for fifth? So what's your in?
Preference is given to continuing students and also the students.
Okay.
That's a statute.
Yeah.
Rhonda, anything else that you wanna add in general before we get back to anything specific? Yes?
Another.
Can you, can you give your name, please, for the record?
I'm Mary K. Risto, I'm a second-grade teacher at the chain school right now.
Thank you.
And another misconception is that students will not be learning the basics of math, reading, writing, and they will, the way that we were envisioning it, is that students would have math, reading, writing in the morning, and then the afternoon would be geared more towards the projects. But, you know, the basics are still going to be covered, and all the standards will be covered also.
Okay. And Mary K., as long as you've got the floor there, can you, can you just remind us, at the chain school, physically, where will, where will, where will the students actually be housed?
Right now, we're looking at the second floor with, there are, I believe, five empty classrooms, so some of those classrooms we will be occupied.
It'll be a multi-page setting, so third, fourth, and fifth grade mix for project work within that wing.
Okay, thank you. Okay, now maybe we can go back to that, page eight, was it? And again, for the sake of our audience, yesterday, we made some changes that we wanted to see tonight, they were, I don't wanna say minor, but they weren't terribly long, and we were gonna look at them, but they didn't come through, so now we're looking at them real quickly.
Well, see, the change that I was told was gonna be made, it does not appear in this document.
And that's, that's my fault, I missed it, it definitely should be gone, and I'm just doing that now.
Okay, all right.
So the one thing we're referring to, just so everybody's on the same page, is that when you open a charter school in an existing school, state statute says that the students who reside in that area should get first preference over anybody else. And so what we're saying is, we want this school to be open to all students in the Wapaka community. So that's the exemption we're looking from, the waiver we're looking from. And so the wording in there right now says that the lottery preference goes to people, students who reside in the chain attendance area first, and then it will open up after that. So we're looking to take that language out, so it'd be any student in Wapaka.
We want to ensure this isn't just a school for families who live on the chain. This is something people from across the district can participate in, and everyone has equal opportunity.
Right. And that's, that's what the language will reflect as soon as we make the change here.
Can you get access to it?
Okay. Any other changes that we need to talk about now on the, on the document? I mean, is there anything else? I mean, the other ones were put in here, I had asked about a couple of things about annual, I assume you put in the annual, took out the annual, but it is, thank you. And I think everything else should be fine. So I don't know if you wanna proceed with a vote on that, or wait until we get that?
Does anybody wish to have this?
I'm not gonna vote on it until I see.
Okay, then we can, we can come back to that.
Cindy, were you making that adjustment on your?
I lost access to the internet.
Okay.
To do it.
And if, just for the sake of our audience, if it seems a little tedious, we wanna try to get this right the first time through, because this is a very big deal, and it's a five-year agreement, so we don't wanna have to come back to this every month.
At this point, until we have the adjusted seven point three, we'll table this.
Okay.
And come back to it when we do have that.
Okay. Okay, do you wanna go down to the next item?
I'm still in the instructional committee.
All right, so we're putting the charter school on hold for a second, or for a minute or two, and we're gonna move on to calendar adjustments. The school district has looked into making calendar adjustments or changes that would entail primarily Wednesday, a block of time on Wednesdays for teacher in-service slash working together, and also then change the students' time on those Wednesdays as well to be involved in some activities. And I'm gonna ask Don, if he would, to please just kinda highlight why we're doing that, and if, in fact, we pass that, when it'll be implemented.
Sure, as Pat said, the goal is that we would release our students potentially on Wednesdays, if the board would approve at approximately two P.M., which will allow our staff to be able to collaborate weekly, to do the type of work we would like, as we're trying to work towards having a guaranteed and viable curriculum, and try to ensure that all students can learn at high levels, we wanna give our staff the time to be able to collaborate every single week. So as you could see in the memo we outlined, we would, in order to accomplish that, we're gonna be losing a little bit of instructional time. So in order to make up that time, we decided we would potentially remove the three existing early release days that are in the calendar for next year. We would also then need to add ten minutes per day to our middle school in order to accommodate the needs, as well as adding six minutes per day to our high school to account for those missing days. Now, as we look down a little bit, we have in red what's called the principles of after-school care, because we believe that, as number three puts up there, we do not want this to be an inconvenience at all for the families in Wapaka. We feel strongly that we would almost want to see no change if I were a parent in the community. So we put up there that this is an optional time for students, with, say, provided as a service from two o'clock to when buses would potentially normally come. And then we said it's an opportunity for students to work on after-school work, we can see that mainly it's meant to be as a not, as an inconvenience, but there are, if parents wanted to, the ability on Wednesdays to pick their students up, to take them home. So you can see that it really gets into, we're gonna provide a decent amount of activities where the principals work together, their director of co-creatives activities to design that period. Then just down below that, we outlined a couple of more things. We are going to, if this is approved, we'll begin to flood all of our social media networks, as well as using Infinite Campus email messenger to get the word out, as well as our newspaper and radio about what does this mean for parents, what are the options gonna be, so our parents know right away that if needed, I know I'm a working person, that there would be no change from the parent's side, except for their student at two o'clock on Wednesdays would be done, and that they would then, their students would go into an after-school care program if the parent decided to choose that, is the real key there. So then, we would also then survey our parents, see how many would want their students to stay there, and figure out what they potentially would want to do. That's what most districts at this point would do, is figure out how many of the parents say, "I'll keep my kid at school because I don't have the ability to pick him up," or how many of them would say, "I want to take my student home." And then, we also then researched what are four other districts, as you guys can see on the memo, what they do. The biggest thing I've learned is that typically, at the lower levels, from kindergarten through about fourth grade, you see childcare provided. The ones who hit older than fourth grade, it's pretty much, most of the districts have it as the parent's responsibility. So I feel already, as a, as a board and as a district of Wapaka, as a head of the other districts, we're trying to provide a service to our families, so that way students, almost any grade level, would have the ability to have childcare provided, if need be, at all grade levels. Whereas you really look at, when I talk to all those other districts, it's, nope, that's up to the parents, they gotta figure out, we just released them, and they said, for the most part, their parents didn't ever have an issue. And the one story I'll give, as I was talking to Little shoot yesterday, they said that they had it for their kindergarten through fourth, they worked with the YMCA, created this whole idea for fifth and sixth grade, they needed at least twelve kids to sign up for it, they advertised it out, and only three of their fifth and sixth grade families said that they would want support, so they couldn't even run their childcare for fifth and sixth grade, because there wasn't even enough interest there, where their parents responded from home. So that's kind of the summary of kind of what we're, we're looking at, but, so we had to make some calendar changes if we are going to have this time from two o'clock to, for our teachers to collaborate.
Okay, and, sorry, there were a couple of changes on the actual calendar dates, remember we said after, did you?
Correct, yes, we, because we added, because it's, there were, originally, we said thirty-four Wednesdays, we originally did not have a collaboration on the first Wednesday, which is the second day of school, which we still did not, but we did add it to the first Wednesday after the holiday break, just so that way, it's, families don't see a change, and once they enter pattern, there's usually a Wednesday, so it's been different.
Because when, when this meeting is over and this gets published, I wanna make sure we got the right calendar.
Correct, that's.
Okay.
Hopefully you have that now.
Just, just so everybody realizes, the board is trying to do due diligence here, everything you see up there in red today is because yesterday, when we went through this entire document and talked about it out of infinitum, there were some concerns that we had, and so we asked Don and the administration to go back and give us some more information. That's why he has a process to inform and engage students, how we're gonna do that, how other districts are handling it. That's the information that we wanted to see, so that we could make an informed decision tonight, because there were some concerns that we had along those lines, okay? Now, having said all of that, questions that anybody else on the board has, and how's the time to bring them up?
I would like to respectfully submit, and I know some people say that I get over-involved with semantics, but that we attempt to avoid the term childcare, and look at those segments of time more as times at which we can help our students with, whether it's academic needs, to me, again, maybe it's just semantics, but we are going to have study time available, and we'll integrate other activities as may be appropriate, but personally, I reserve, or am hesitant to use the term childcare, because that's really denoting, at least in my mind, something quite different.
And while I certainly understand the concern, I think the other side of that coin is, we also don't wanna give the false impression that instruction is going to continue during that time. So I think we'll certainly work to try to find just the right verbiage to portray that we are going to provide an environment that's conducive for those that want to study after school. However, we also want to be very clear that there won't be any new instruction that will be taking place during that time. So our educational assistance will be available to support our students in a safe and structured environment, but our teaching staff will be busily engaged in professional development, so just another semantic.
And maybe if we used organized activities or something like that, childcare to me denotes that there would be a cost involved.
Yeah, that's true.
You know, when parents would see this, they might think, "Oh, I have to pay extra to have my child stay there." So to let them know that this, there would be no cost involved. So to let them know that this, there would be no cost involved, and that there would be different organized activities that their child could participate in.
That work on the point we'll take.
Good point. And I also think we need to remind people that as we see other districts and release their plan, we also have the flexibility to coordinate some of our after-hour programming with, for instance, the park and rec department here in the city, or other organizations that might want to collaborate with us in order of providing more opportunities for those students during that time. So there's a lot of possibilities here. And again, we're moving in the direction of this change in 2018, 19, which would be next fall. So we've still got nine months to try to work out a lot of the bugs and details, which the administration will have to do if we pass it tonight.
Is the committee making a recommendation?
The committee is making a recommendation that we adopt the school district calendar 2018-19 with the changes on the Wednesday and the changes which will have supervised child activities after, from 2:00 until the end of the school day.
So it's a committee recommendation to the board. Are there any questions? I'm wondering, I do want to have Sandy here.
Oh, yeah. Okay. We can hold off.
Could you, Chuck, under availability, please?
The committee may wish to move forward with the other items.
Come back to this.
And then include them all as.
Yeah, we can do that. Okay. I'll take my motion back for the moment. We'll move on. We had a lengthy committee meeting yesterday, so we've got a lot of things to talk about. The next one has to do with coaches instructional, coach positions. This would be in the academic areas, and the district is looking to include in terms of our staff for next year. And so I'm going to ask Don again to give us a little bit of a highlight in terms of those positions.
So I think Greg and I, as we have a point, that this is more of, what's the word you use, a notice to the board, or?
For informational.
For informational, this is not an actual item, because we're going to be essentially reassigning three FTEs for the purpose of instructional coaches. And one of the things we've learned as we've worked, is that we want to support our teachers, so that as we're taking on new initiatives, we want to make sure that they have the support that they need to be able to implement our different initiatives to the greatest extent possible. So part of what we showed, worked with the board on is looking at the research behind when you have embedded coaching. We talk about when you first hear something to when you get a chance to implement it with a level of fidelity. We know that at the far bottom right, we see that when you have embedded coaching, it gives a chance to have up to 80 to 90% of use with fidelity for when you first use something. And so this year, we know as an example, we have taken on some literacy coaches through one day a week, from the feedback we've heard from our staff, as they've loved it. And the staff who don't have the coaches are asking, when can they get that? So we know that if we're going to continue to have, help every student learn at a high level, our staff need to be able to implement things with fidelity. But to be able to do that, they need the support. So we want to be able to provide support to them directly in the classroom with modeling, helping support them, so that we can move forward with that.
That would be a point at which it's a fairly clear cut between instructional committee and personnel committee. The next item is a bit of a blend. It'd be willing to entertain at this point with Sandy's return. The committee recommendation on the 2018-2019 calendar adjustment, the committee has submitted to the board the recommendation that we adopt that. I'll ask for a, it does not require a second coming out of committee, I'll ask for a roll call vote. Betty Mannion?
Yes.
Steve Shamble?
Yes.
Sandy Robinson?
Yes.
Dimitri Martin?
Aye.
Pat Fair?
Aye.
Steve Johnson, yes.
Okay.
The second item, the MTSS instructional coach positions, does not require a motion. That was for information. And where are we on the?
We're on the team leader positions.
We can have it now.
Okay. And it would be available where?
On the web.
Okay. Is it linked there?
It should be.
Okay. So we could go to that. Item 7.3?
Yes, that's on page nine.
Okay. Mostly because you gave a few. And that's great. The other.
You should be able to access it directly on your grub books here as well.
Scroll down. So you can see what was crossed off in the paragraph beginning, if the number of applicants.
So what was taken out, you're comfortable with the rest of it?
Yep.
Okay. Sandy, is there anything else that we should know about, any changes other than this right here?
No, I think this, I apologize.
That's okay. It's okay.
But that is consistent than the waiver that we're discussing.
Right.
And the intent to have this be a community.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay. With the correction to 7.3, the instructional committee is recommending that we approve?
The instructional committee is recommending that we adopt the contract with the CEC, which stands for our new charter school, and again, the official name, I keep forgetting, sorry, is the Chain Exploration Center, and we would make that recommendation.
Okay. Coming out of committee, it does not need a second. I'll ask for a roll call vote.
May I ask a quick question? Megan had asked if it would be possible to also grant the ability to change the wording in 11.1, if we can make a stronger case for this waiver, if we find after our discussions with the DPI that there might be something else we could include. We'd certainly run it, and it's very possible we won't be recommending any change to that. We'd certainly ask that Dr. Nian take a look at it and support it.
Can you, Megan, maybe you can answer this. What's the intent here that you'd like us to do to change?
I think we're just, we're looking to make sure that we have the strongest argument possible. I still have a call-in to the DPI with a contact there, and she was going to get back to me this week. And so in order to receive the waiver, we just want to be, make sure that the wording is there so that we will receive it. And so if we need to tweak anything, even if it's minor, then we just want the leniency or flexibility to be able to do that once we get back from her.
Is the committee willing to adjust their recommendation to include latitude on no substantive change to the 11, section 11 on the waiver? Should there be advice given by the DPI to specific wording that could strengthen the request for waiver?
As long as there's no substantive change to it, and then ultimately it enables us to get that waiver so that students will not be limited to those people who live on the chain, and people from across the district who attend. Betty?
Right.
Did the, did they give you any indication as to how long it might take for them to get back to you?
She said it would be this week. She was consulting with her legal department, and so it was a little more complicated, the questions that I had, since the way our attendance lines are drawn and such. So she was going to have to talk to the legal department to give me real concrete answers on it.
Okay. Is the committee okay with that consideration?
I think so. We should move forward.
I'm comfortable with it, as I said.
Any changes would be forward to the board so that we are aware of it. We would ask that there not be any substantive change. However, if the case can be made stronger, within the spirit of the discussions and the presented contract.
Okay. And Megan, you will be in contact, certainly with Mr. Nian, if something comes up and you think that it's something that needs to be brought back to our attention, for whatever reason, you can certainly do that. We can always call a special meeting if necessary at that time. But assuming we don't have to, and everything is strengthened, we're going to move forward here, I believe.
I'll ask for a roll, is there any other discussion or comments at this point? The committee has made their recommendation with the general latitude of some wording in section 11 on waivers, but no substantive change. If there is substantive change, it'll be brought back to the board. Okay. With that, I would ask for a roll call vote.
Hester?
Aye.
Steve Shamble?
Aye.
Sandy Robinson?
Aye.
Betty Mannion?
Aye.
Dimitri Martin?
Aye.
Steve Johnson?
Aye.
Good luck.
I'd add with grateful thanks to these two ladies and Sandy, who worked so hard with their board, also on the parents, and Rondell, for a job really, really well done.
Yeah, very well done.
The work has just begun.
Yeah. Yeah, we're anxious to get the first progress report back in the air. That'll be wonderful. And this.
Okay, we'll move on to the team leader positions coming out of committee. Again, this is kind of a combined committee, instructional and personnel committee recommendation.
Yeah, I don't know if, well, it's under instructional here. Personnel's got plenty of its own, it looks like.
Do you want to take it? Or take it?
Okay. Team leader positions. The school district administration is suggesting we enter into an idea of creating some team leader positions throughout the district. As you can see on the overhead there, that we're talking a total of 19, I believe it is, 19 team leader positions. And they're broken down according to the numbers, as you see there. The idea is, as you can read, is to help, this is not a department chairman concept, but it's more the idea that the people involved with the instructional curriculum concerns, especially as they fall on those Wednesday afternoons, will help to facilitate the changes and discussions and keep everything up to speed. The team leader positions will receive a stipend, as you can see, for $1,500, and twice, given out in two different installments throughout the year. And the impact to the district is $28,500, which we have, yesterday, we talked at length about in terms of our budgetary concerns, and it falls within our budget. And so the recommendation is to include for the next year, which would be 2018-19, 19 leader positions. Now, who those people are going to be exactly is up to the administration to determine, and that's going to be their job coming up in the future.
The committee is recommending to the board that we adopt a team leader positions a total of 19, with the stipend per position of $1,500. Correct?
Correct.
Okay. Coming out of committee, no second is needed. Any discussion?
I just have one question, and I'm going to pick on Dale, because I know Dale is never afraid of answering. What do you think, Dale, in terms of these positions?
Well, I think it's great. It's a little late, because I've been department chair for 30 years with all the extra work. And I'm happy now to see that people are going to recognize that, because we try to fill that in on our prep hours. We've done it on our prep hours, trying to get things done. And so now I'm glad to see that, that now there's going to be recognition for it. I think it's needed.
One more here.
His is coming up in the incentive.
Okay. Are there any other questions or comments with regard to the recommendation coming out of committee? Okay, this one will now require a roll call vote. This could be a voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Very good. Next item on the agenda, personnel committee. We start with the teacher handbook language.
The personnel committee met two times during this month. We gathered on December 18th for a meeting, and yesterday, January 9th for a meeting. And at the December 18th meeting, the ball was set in motion with the changes to the budget this past year. Teacher licenser, licensure has changed pretty dramatically, I would say. And so we had to start a new plan in place to address different ways that licensing will take place, and ways that teachers will be compensated and whatever. So our initial meeting in December 18th was to approach all of that. We looked at the support staff handbook, we looked at the professional development plan, what it will look like next year for teachers, language updates for the teacher handbooks, and those were all drafts and preliminary presentations. So yesterday, when we met, a lot of it was finalized, and so we met to discuss it and to approve some of the changes. So the first issue that we discussed was the handbook language updates for the teacher language. And the recommendation was, after consulting with our attorney, Jim Macy, who went over it with a fine-tooth comb, he had some good suggestions for us, so we looked at all of that. And the recommendation that we're bringing to the board tonight is to approve the new contract language and the handbook language and the changes that were presented by our attorneys.
Very good. Coming out of committee, there is not a second required. Is there any discussion or questions? There being none, I will do this on a roll call vote, in that it pertains to both contract and handbook.
Steve Shamble?
Yes.
Sandy Robinson?
Yes.
Betty Mannion?
Yes.
Dimitri Martin?
Aye.
Pat Fair?
Aye.
Steven Johnson?
Yes. Next item for the committee.
Okay. The next is the teacher hand, no, we just did that.
Actually, we did the contract language, which is also handbook language, section 16.
Okay. We're looking at the base adjustment to the current salary schedule now for the teachers. And a study was done of how, what our starting pay is for the teachers in our school district. And we found out that statewide and local wide, and with our bordering districts of Amund Bank, Rock, Iowa, Manoa, Tomorrow River, Waton, Marwah, and the Three Month, Wild Rose, that we are below what starting teachers in those areas are making. And we realized that with the decline in young people entering into the educational field, and the decline in universities in the state of Wisconsin, I think it's up to 60% decline, that it would behoove us to be competitive with those school districts around us, that we should look at raising our base salary for everything teachers. So based on all these graphs that you see here, we looked at all of them, and we came up with the number that $38,000. Right now, our current base salary is 35,936 for a starting teacher. And we have 8.5 full-time employees. If we raised the salary, who would actually make less than our starting salary teachers would make? So our recommendation is that we increase the base amount of our starting teachers to $38,000, and that we take those 8.5 full-time teachers that have a year, year and a half of experience with our, in our district, and we bump them up to 38.5, so that they would be making more than a starting salary teacher wage. So we felt that increasing this base salary would help us with the number of teachers that we foresee that we're going to have retiring in our district in the next five years or so, and it will help us to remain competitive, and also to get the very best that we can that are out there. So the recommendation that we put forward to the board was that we moved to set the entry-level teaching salary for a teacher who holds a bachelor's degree with zero experience at 38, and to those 8.5 full-time employee staff members that we have fall below 38, to put them at 38.5.
Okay, we had the opportunity to bet this yesterday. Are there any questions coming out of committee? It does not need a second. Any questions or comments? There being none, we'll take this with a roll call as well, please.
Sandy Robinson?
Yes.
Betty Mannion?
Yes.
Dimitri Martin?
Aye.
Steve Shamble?
Yes.
Pat Fair?
Aye.
Steven Johnson?
Yes. Thank you.
Okay. The next item, D, is administrative contracts. And policy 1118.22 governs administrative contracts, and it prevents administrative And it prevents administrators from entering into a contract that spans more than three years. And so in an effort to bring all of our administrators onto the same two-year cycle so that we're on board with all of them, we need to offer one-year contracts to our WLC principal, our chain principal, our director of student services, and our business manager so that we can get all of our administrators on the same contract schedule. This one-year contract in no way reflects on, you know, ability or performance or whatever. It's just literally like a housekeeping item to make sure that we're all on the same contract schedule. So we move to approve the attached administrative contracts for those administrators that I just mentioned. So five, WLC, chain, director of student services, oh, and the business manager, that's four.
And I think it's appropriate to say that all of the salaries, numbers of days of working and whatnot have not changed on any of those. It was just the idea of bringing them into agreement with the other ones in terms of rotation. So it's not an increase or decrease or any of that.
Okay.
Okay.
So that's the motion we bring forward.
Okay, committee recommendation does not require a second. Are there any questions? Or discussion?
I guess, I'm curious what the benefit is of putting them all together as opposed to spread out. We have turnover of staff, and we'd hate to have all turnover at once, and, you know what I mean? It might be better for us to have it staggered.
Well, administrators are, ooh, excuse me, are allowed to have only a two-year contract. So if you're going to have turnover, you would have to follow the statute requirements, which, you know, outline very clearly if the administrator intends to break the contract when that could take place or when the board would want to break the contract, when and how that could take place. So whether they're staggered or not, it's really just a matter of efficiency and housekeeping rather than negotiating administrative contracts every year. In this manner or approach, we're doing it every other year. So it's really just a tool of efficiency.
And that outweighs the benefit of possibly having, retaining some staff in those, in those annual, in those two-year cycles. Like if multiple people left at once, you'd lose a lot of your continuity, I guess, yeah.
Yeah, there's really no connection there, though, to their, I mean, if, they could all, you know, walk out tonight and in May.
Let's not suggest that at the right.
Right. But there's no connection between the timing of their departure and the length of the contract. There's no intent here behind the timing of the contract at all.
Other questions? Okay, is that a legging identity concern? You might have that explanation.
It just makes it easier so that when we give increases, for instance, if one year wouldn't be for one group and then the next year we've got to come back and do the same thing, we do it all at once if possible. Makes it a little easier for budgetary purposes, too.
I think there's pros and cons to both.
Yeah, probably.
If that's what you want to do, I'm fine with it, I guess.
Okay. Recommendation, any other discussion? All in, actually, I'll do a roll call on this.
Demetri Martin?
Aye.
Betty Mannion?
Yes.
Sandy Robinson?
Yes.
Steven Johnson?
Yes.
Steve Shamble?
Yes.
Pat Fair?
Aye.
Okay.
Next item?
Item E, the agenda is adminis, no. Item E is Director of Athletic and Organized Activities Position Description. We realize now with the vacancy with our athletic director position that we need to look at the position and how it's going to be filled. So again, a study has been done on schools of our size and those that are comparable to us in our state and how that works and how many young people are actually involved in the activities in our school. And the first chart of that one shows the number of young people. Our students in grades seven through 12 who are involved in the fine arts. The next graph below, or table, rather, shows the number of students participating in co-curricular activities. And then the bottom chart lists those seventh through 12th grade students who are involved in athletic activities. Noteworthy that only, if a student is involved in several athletics or activities, they'd only be listed once in this chart. They wouldn't be listed more than once. So you can see we have a very large amount of our student population that's involved in fine arts, in co-curriculars, and athletic activities. So moving on from that to the next table, we took a look at surrounding, not necessarily surrounding, but school districts of comparable size to us and how their athletic director position looks, whether it's full-time, part-time, and, you know, it's part principal, part assistant principal, whatever, and the salary for those. So based on that, and we see where we are, kind of in the middle of that table, too, we are making the recommendation to create a director of co-curricular activities slash athletic position. So this person would be in touch with all the co-curricular activities through seventh through 12th grade in our district and all the athletic director positions. And the recommended salary range would be from $55,000 to $65,000 depending on experience, licensure, and education.
Okay, recommendation for the job description, just to ensure that there isn't confusion. While that first chart that you referenced did indeed have participation in fine arts courses, the fine arts courses themselves would not report to this article. All right, contract is, that we discussed yesterday, starts on page, was it four of the attachment? Any questions regarding the recommendation coming out of committee?
Mr. Dean, maybe you could just give everybody here an idea on when this would be posted?
Yes, we intend to post it this month.
Okay, and that would be open to anybody within or without the district?
Correct, it'll be in open posting.
Other question?
I'm sorry, I was just going to say, in our committee yesterday, and just for the sake of information, it's probably, and I don't say for certain, but that person would be housed in this building, is that correct?
Yes.
With an assistant staff?
Correct, the current allocation of support staff would remain.
Other questions? Okay, we'll take a roll call on this.
Pat Fair?
Aye.
Steve Shamble?
Yes.
Sandy Robinson?
Yes.
Betty Mannion?
Yes.
Demetri Martin?
Aye.
Steven Johnson?
Yes.
Okay.
Next item?
Right along. Item S, Retirement Notification Incentive. As I mentioned a little bit earlier, the University of Wisconsin School System, or university system, is reporting that there's as much as a 60% reduction in young people that are entering the educational fields in the state of Wisconsin. And there are fewer and fewer trained teachers that are coming out of, and candidates, which means a greater competition for schools. If you look at the chart here, you can see the bottom number across all of those blue boxes is 2017, so it's where we're at right now. And the largest, the tallest blue block, which is two over from your right-hand side, represents how many of our teachers are between, have been in our district between 20 and 30 years, which is great news. The bad news is, is it looks like, you know, when all of them decide to pat off the door, that's, there's going to be a big influx of really well-respected, incredible teachers who have served this district so well. But it's also going to create a big vacancy for a lot of teachers. And with the foresee, seeing down the road that there's going to be a shortage of teachers, we have to do everything we can to place ourselves in a position, which is not uncommon now with Act 10, that we can advertise early, we can use incentives to draw good qualified teachers to our district. So this committee is recommending that we give an incentive to teachers who are planning to retire, that they give us a little more rewarding than might be traditional. I think it's May, or March 15th that they have to.
March 1st.
March 1st. So, and I think a lot of teachers do know in their final year that they, this might be it. So if they would know by October 31st, if they would let us know, there would be a $1,000 incentive if they would let us know that, or if they would let us know by January 31st, there would be a $500 incentive for them. It's kind of a win-win. It helps them with every, pardon, or whatever, or their travel plans. And it also would help us to be able to go to job fairs and things like that where we could actively recruit, particularly some of those areas that are really difficult to fill, some of the specialized courses, that are, there are very few teachers coming out. So our recommendation is that we put through this creation of a tiered incentive for the timely notification of intent to retire.
Recommendation coming from committee, it does not need a second. Is there any discussion?
I just have a question. Mr. Feld, how do you think we ought to vote on this?
I have a question. I have one question. I have not made my, I have not hidden my agenda this year. From the beginning of the year, I've talked to Mr. Dean and Mr. Clayton about my intention to retiring this year. But if I would have known that this was going to happen like October 31st, I would have had that letter into you right away. Okay? How does that go retro for the, I knew we were going to retire this year. Because my paperwork's already into the WA. I sent that in a long time ago. I just didn't write a letter yet here, because I was trying to look for the formal type of letters I was supposed to write, which wasn't like, "Ay, yo, son."
You know, I don't know how to respond to that, Mr. Feld, but Dr. Dean is smiling. That's all I'm going to say, or smirking.
Because he's been trying to convince me otherwise.
It's a reason for you to stay till next year.
Still voluntary.
Yeah.
I was arguing with my wife on that one.
You don't have anything else to do. No.
So, anyway, the recommendation.
I would just like to ask, what happens if they have, if they file a notice, intend to retire, but then later decide not to retire after they've accepted the bonus?
I assume they would pay that back.
Yeah, then they would pay that.
For a bit of clawback, yes.
Okay.
Which is a very good question, because maybe something could happen.
My son lives in the Wyoming School District. They have it at $2,000 to retire early on, and they are giving that to the teachers right away, and if they decide that not to retire, they have to pay that back. And what you told me, I hear about this.
Oh, dear.
Do you think we should up it?
No good, Dean.
He's going to leave anyway. We want to keep him another year, let's up it.
No, it's not going to $2,000.
$2,000 for this, for next year, and then it'll go down.
Okay, any other questions regarding the recommendation of the committee? Or comments? There being none?
I guess I do have a question. So is Wyoming the only school that you're familiar with that does this, that we're competing against? Because, I mean, we are going to be competing against these other schools, and if they're offering higher amounts.
It's really not competing with other schools as much as incentivizing not people specifically to retire, particularly as much of being as noticed as possible to retire. So if another district is doing $3,000, it really doesn't matter because they're not retiring from here. So it's not a competition.
Well, we're competing for the new teachers coming in. And if they're offering greater incentives to their senior staff for advanced notification and getting a higher uptake on that, then they'll have a jump on, I suppose, on certain candidates.
I think that there's an opportunity to talk about recruitment and retention at another, probably, committee meeting. I think that, you know, what we're talking, I think what the board is doing with salary adjustments on the front end over the career of a teacher makes much more of an impact than, you know, a $2,000 or a $1,000 thank you on the retirement. But I think that you raise a good point. We need to talk about recruitment and retention, and we can certainly do better.
Is a retiring teacher able to use those monies to throw a party for?
I don't think he heard you, but.
Is a retiring teacher able to use those funds for throwing a party or anything? Okay, there's a motion?
Before he comments.
Do you want a roll call again?
Uh, yes.
Demetri Martin?
Aye.
Betty Mannion?
Yes.
Sandy Robinson?
Yes.
Steve Shamble?
Yes.
Pat Fair?
Aye.
Steven Johnson?
Yes.
Okay, and the last thing, Item G, Director of Teaching and Learning Position Description. Sadly, the district has received a notice of termination of our leased employee agreement with our Directors of Teaching and Learning, Don Smith and Garth Larson, who have been with us for a year, and we shared their abilities with Winnicott and Mayville. And because of vacancies that have been created in Mayville, or Winnicott, excuse me, Mr. Smith and Mr. Larson can no longer remain with the contract that we have right now. Excuse me. Pat, take it away.
That's okay, we all got choked up when we filed them.
Yeah. So basically, for those of you who don't know, Mr. Don was here, Mr. Smith was here as a result of a contract agreement we had with the Winnicott School District, who basically leased him, I don't know why it sounds like a car company, but leased him to us for this year, and we were hoping that that would continue into next year. They wrote us a letter just recently and said, "No." And so he has to return, and that's why we no longer have him. So that particular position will be open. And over time, we hope to fill that with somebody else. At this point, we don't know, we haven't gone any further with that discussion, but we do have to act upon his resignation.
It's actually, if I may, we're not actually acting on his resignation, we're looking at a position description for the district.
For the, for the position that he's presently holding, okay.
And the creating, creation of this position, which is actually the position that they're both doing right now, will be dependent upon credentials, experience, education, licensure gap, but the impact will not have, make any difference on our budget. So the salary will remain the same, based on, obviously, experience. It'll be between $105,000 and $120,000. So it will have no impact on our budget for next year, so it's just a change in, implied.
And Mr. Dean, again, same question, when would this be posted?
This month.
Okay.
Okay, so committee is making the recommendation to approve the position description for the Director of Teaching and Learning. Coming out of committee, a second is not needed. Any discussion or questions? There being none?
Demetri Martin?
Aye.
Betty Mannion?
Aye.
Sandy Robinson?
Yes.
Steve Shamble?
Yes.
Pat Fair?
Aye.
Steven Johnson?
Yes. Okay, considering the wealth of information that was presented, do the instructional or personnel committees have any additional items for the board? That's a good answer. Ready? Okay, we move on to the Item G, Administrator.
Oh, excuse me, excuse me, I do have one coming, because I mentioned before that the charter school contract, if somebody did want to look at the finished copy, where can they get a copy of it?
It's available online, it's linked right now.
With the correct one, as adjusted?
Yep.
Okay, so maybe wants to look at that. And the other, and our calendars for the next term, where can people get a copy?
Also linked online.
That is not linked online because that
That is not linked online, because that was just this afternoon. They can get a copy in our office, and I will link it on the board of documentation as well.
Because principals, and I'm sure we'll get parents asking about next year, so we'll make those go. Okay, thank you.
Okay, moving on to the Administrator section.
Open enrollment is Ms. Markon?
And Emily, Pat, at the January Board meeting. We need to determine whether or not we have available space for non-residential transfer students. And so that is looked at both with the general education students as well as special education students. And special education students, we use a formula, the state formula, to kind of leave the availability depending on the needs of each of those individual students. And so if we take a look at the summary, currently we have capacity at each of our buildings for general education students to, to continue to open enroll at each of the buildings. And based on our formula for special education, we have the capacity to, to open that, open enrollment for, for 25 special education students with the limit of five individuals in our early childhood program, and no capacity for non-resident students with our intellectual disabilities in grades nine through 12. Also in the summary, I indicated currently, right now, our open enrollment of regular education, we have 106 students enrolled, and the number of students open enrolled out is 116. With special education, we have a total of 23 open enrolled special education students, and the number of students with disabilities open enrolled out is 16. We are making the recommendation, the motion to approve 100 general education non-resident seats available under open enrollment for the 2018-19 school year, and again, to approve a limit of five early childhood special education seats available for the three-year-olds, 25 special education seats available for students with disabilities in grades K through 12, with the, with the exception of the intellectual disabilities for students in grades nine through 12.
Marie, in the, in the last three to five years, how are our numbers trending? Are they staying about the same, are they going up and down a little bit?
We're, we're staying fairly consistent with that, open enrollment and enrollment.
Okay, any other questions with regard to the recommendation?
One quick question, did our anticipating having a charter school affect these numbers at all?
No, no, I think that we still have that, the, the capacity, because we haven't maxed out to that 100, I think we have enough availability.
Thank you.
Other questions or a motion?
I'd make a motion to approve 100 general education non-resident seats available under open enrollment for the 2018-19 school year.
Second?
You want separate motions for these?
Yes.
Probably, yes.
Okay, so, your motions for which one, Sandy?
For number one, item number one.
Okay.
Okay, motion and second, are there any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. We also heard about the limits by category or grade?
I'd make a motion to approve a limit of five early childhood special education seats available for three-year-olds, 25 special education seats available for?
Students with disabilities.
Students with disabilities in grades K through 12, zero intellectual disability special education seats available for students in grades nine through 12, and 10 seats available in the live program for 2018-19 school year.
Motion, is there a second?
Yes.
Motion and second, any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, motion passes. Takes us to item two under Administrator.
Yes, the police school liaison agreement, memorandum of understanding and the actual agreement between the school district and the city of Waukegah, has not been current since 2007. So we have reviewed and revised the agreements, and the memorandums are attached and they're submitted for the board's approval. There are no substantive changes in the agreements, other than names and positions of people that were no longer with us. Yeah. Yes, I'm sorry.
Could you remind us, Greg, how is the police liaison salary determined?
Well, it's according to the, their bargaining unit, and the district pays a portion of that as identified in the agreement.
And the other half is paid by the city?
By the city.
Yes. And then during the summer months, the police personnel person is doing city work, is that right?
Correct, that's correct.
Any other questions?
I'm approving approval of the agreement and memorandum of understanding between the city of Waukegah and the district as presented.
Second?
Motion and second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. The final item?
And the final item is a Strawberry Fest request. The Chamber of Commerce has approached us with a, a difficulty finding a location for Strawberry Fest for the, the next three years. The city is going to be tearing up the downtown area and doing some street work, and as such, Strawberry Fest has, has been displaced. The Chamber President, Terry Schultz, and Mr. Mitch Swenson, met with Mr. Hayek and myself, and we reviewed their, their request to relocate Strawberry Fest to the high school campus. This is their, their number one choice for locations, and we believe that this is an opportunity for the district to showcase this beautiful district to anywhere between eight and 10,000 people that attend Strawberry Fest. So the administration is certainly supportive of this partnership with the city.
Any questions?
And the date again on that, look, June 16th, is that correct?
That is correct.
And, and how many days will that actually entail in terms of usage? Would it be Friday night, Saturday, and then some on Sunday, or?
Uh, no, it's minimal setup on, on Friday, it's all day on Saturday, of course, and then there will be some Boy Scouts available for cleanup on Sunday. So they'll make sure that the grounds and campus is, is, as it was prior to their arrival, and they will reimburse the cost for any, any costs that the district might incur as a result. So if we need to have a custodian, for example, present during that time, they will cover those costs.
Now, I know in the past, as you, you have, and most of us have seen, they generally put up large tents and that sort of thing. And in the cities, typically where they put that up on, on west, East Fulton Street, they, they'll, they'll put holes in the pavement in order to?
There will be no holes in the pavement.
Where are they gonna, where are they gonna do it?
The tent for the food service will be located in the same location as where we had the food tent for the?
Out on the tailgate.
Tailgate party.
Yeah, for the tailgate.
They'll be able to access electricity at that point as well, and yeah, there will be no holes put into the pavement.
Well, they do it there, I mean, they, they put up those big ones, so.
I might also, I might also add that Mr. Hayek skillfully negotiated a free admission for the entire board to Strawberry Fest, so.
And strawberry sharkade?
Yep. You've got that, you've got that going for it.
Along that line, though, is there anything that our students could get involved with since it's on our campus? I know it's after school, but like, certain groups, maybe?
I think that that, that possibility is certainly, is certainly there, you just need to explore it.
Good.
Right now, we'll definitely work at it, so these organizations.
That have, maybe this will make it a little easier for you, I don't know. Yep?
Shouldn't there be something under number 11 up there that says, "Administration will take part in the..."
With, with retiring?
No, I did that one here, so, so I think, I think it would be kind of easy to see.
Joel Kemper, the one at the one.
And could've gotten, I'm sure. Okay, so there's a recommendation that we allow the high school campus to be available in the summers of 2018, 19, and 20 for Strawberry Fest. I assume that would not involve use of the interior of the building?
Uh, well, that, that remains to be seen, there may be a positive impact should the Comet Cafe have to be open during that time.
But as an example, the arts and crafts cellar would not be placed inside in the event of rain, et cetera?
That's correct.
Okay. All right, any other questions?
Is there a motion, Larry?
Not yet.
Okay, I'll make a motion, and then we accept the, the city's offer to, or the request to have their Strawberry Fest on campus next, three years, actually.
Second?
Motion and second, any question, further questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. That brings us to, it's time of the evening, consent agenda.
I approve the approval of the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote?
Pat Barrett?
Aye.
Steve Shamble?
Aye.
Sandy Robinson?
Yes.
Betty Mannion?
Aye.
Dimitri Martin?
Aye.
Steve Johnson?
Yes.
Then I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, everyone.